...school board meeting of the Metro Hopeton School District in North Posey for October the 11th. We'll open the meeting and by doing so, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item is the rainy day appropriation. Is that right?
Uh, the, mm, yep. We need to open the public hearing.
Public hearing. Oh, that's right. Okay. So, we need to open the public hearing for the additional appropriation to the rainy day fund in the amount of $200,000 to handle expenses that may occur for the rest of the 2016 year. And with opening that, we'll open it up for any questions that anyone may have.
Anybody have any comments on the rainy day additional appropriation? Just to speak again, this is funds that we already have. Uh, I don't think that we'll have to spend them, but you don't want to be in December and not have the money in case something comes up. So, we're asking to spend funds that we already have and this does not have any effect on taxes or anything like that. I would suggest that we leave the hearing open. If anybody has anything, we'll close here in a few seconds after patrons' concerns and then they can ask a question if they need to.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent items. Uh, we'll move to approve these consent items, which include the minutes from previous board meeting of September 12th, the claim docket of, for the period of September 12th to October the 10th, and those other items as listed. So entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that.
So, the motion by Mr. Oakley, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the consent agenda. Any other comments or questions regarding? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. All right, so that brings us to patrons' concern and our first person is Misty Hughes. And I'll remind, we do have several on here that we ask you to keep it brief, uh, in, uh, to three minutes or less, no names, and generalized topic.
All right. Um, just want to talk about bullying. Um, there was, it's an issue that I was concerned about, um, and how it was handled, just because I was told, uh, in the definition of bullying, it has to be a repeated offense. And on this issue, I didn't feel like it should have been a repeated offense, um, or that it should be eligible for a repeated offense. Um, I thought it was a pretty severe instance, um, of what I thought was bullying, but apparently it's not. So, um, I guess that's really it.
Um, I appreciate you coming in, uh, and the only thing I would say is, I, I assume that you've already discussed this with the bullying principle?
I have.
Okay.
I discussed it with, um, but, you know, all, everyone there. Um, I know it was brought to Mr. Camp's, or Dr. Camp's attention, um, by a member of the school board. You know, he, or they followed up on it and said, you know, he was aware of it. Um, I just think something needs to be changed in the policy that either, um, some type of warning that bullying, you know, it doesn't have to always be a repeated offense, um, in order to be considered bullying because of the severity of what was said.
The, the only thing I'll follow up is if you, you know, encourage you that if you, if you want to speak about a specific instance, you know, feel free to contact Dr. Camp for, for a special meeting.
All right.
But other than that, I know as far as our following procedures, as far as bullying and the policy.
The state, back when bullying was a huge hot topic, uh, came out with a, a guideline that you had to follow in Indiana code.
Right.
And so, we set the policy up with Indiana code. And we follow Indiana code. Uh, there's timelines if, if the bullying incident is reported, where you have to do an investigation to determine whether there's not, whether it was considered bullying. Cause obviously people will say everything's bullying and we have to follow the Indiana code on that. We can't deviate from it. So, basically, uh, our policy is exactly in line with Indiana code. So, I mean, we can't deviate from that.
Right. Well, I, I guess my question is also, you know, the policy was adopted in 2013. Has Indiana code changed since then in the last three years with the policy?
Not to my knowledge.
Not regardless of bullying?
No, in regards to bullying.
Okay. And that's what I wasn't, you know, aware of. Um, I don't know what it would be considered. I know law enforcement, you know, considered it harassment, um, which there's nothing in the policy that I could find in the policy and procedure book regarding harassment within the school.
Uh, we have a discipline code in, in the student handbook. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. I, I mean, it, it deals with all kinds of things and things are categorized into those specific cat- categories. I, I, I'm not for sure how they're categorizing harassment.
Right. And that's what, I mean, I have, um, the, I'm, no, I'm not.
I, I just think, I mean, it's, it's probably a lot of your questions. If you want to set up a special time and discuss it with Dr. Camp, I mean, you, you can do so.
Okay.
And just to be clarified, bullying is a specific allegation or disciplinary category or it's all, there may be other things that apply here. It's just not bullying. I don't, I don't even know the details of your specific incident. I'm just saying, just almost by definition, if it's a one-time incident, it's not bullying. It may be something else that, that demands or merits discipline, but it's, it's not bullying.
Right. No, and I understand that. Um.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, Damian Hughes?
Yeah.
You're good? Okay. Uh, Julie Mitchell?
I don't really have any issues.
Just a forewarning?
Just a forewarning, no issues. Um, but, um, in talking to some of the other kids, they had some suggestions and, I mean, I don't know if this is the place to start with them, the suggestions that might help with some of the other, like bullying going on. Um, for instance, I think there's a lot that's maybe not going reported because some of the kids are afraid to say something. And so, some of them would like to see a, an easier, maybe more anonymous way for the kids to let the, the teachers and, um, the principal maybe know of a problem going on, a problem with the student or a physical problem with the student without that student knowing that they said anything, because they feel like that will make the problem worse. So, and I didn't know if it's also possible for if the, if a student does report on another student, if, um, and, and of course, at the school's discretion to say if it's a legit complaint or not, to then, what their policy is on, on sending it home to the parent to let them aware, hey, this is what was reported about your kid today, you know? So, they're at least aware. Cause I think a lot of these other kids, their parents just aren't aware of what happens at, on a daily basis. And whether it's a severe bullying event or not, at least it's, you know, it may be something that it's interfering with, um, classroom interaction. It's interfering with lesson plans because they're being seriously disruptive every day and it's not severe enough to, for maybe the teachers to feel like it's a problem or they're not seeing it cause they're in front of the room and stuff's going on in the back. But if the kids have a chance to report anonymously, this is really being a problem, here's what it is, and, you know, the parents can somehow be notified, here's what was reported today. And if it's an ongoing problem, then at least the parents can be aware of it, gosh, you know, I had no idea that this was happening. And they can get a chance to do something about it or not.
Could, could I respond to that real quickly?
Yeah.
As far as the anonymous reporting, it is part of the Indiana code and part of our policy. So, the anonymous form is online on the district website.
Mm-hmm.
And then as far as reporting to the parents, that's also part of our policy guideline into, uh, whenever you're looking into a bullying allegation, you're to talk to both parents just to say that you're starting the bully investigation and you'll let them know the outcomes of the bullying investigation.
Okay. Um, the forms that are online, is this something that, I mean, the students readily aware of? I mean, they?
Yeah, we, we are required to have bullying training or bully awareness training, but, uh, before October 18th of each school year. How well they go into that, I'm not for sure. Yeah, I'll look into that though.
Okay. I, I think that was just their concerns of, of, a lot of it's not going reported because they don't know how, or they know, they're afraid to say something, or they don't know who to say it to, or, or they don't feel like it's going to be taken seriously, you know? So.
One of the things that you can do, if a student is brought down to the office and there is some type of discipline action to them, uh, most of the time, there's always a phone call and if, and then there's a letter generated and it's mailed. Uh, also, on Harmony, which parents have access to, you can go to each student's discipline record and look and see.
No, I, I don't.
I mean, your own, your own job.
Right. Right. If it's within, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. That, that, the anonymous form for bullying is online, but that doesn't encompass all, you know, she cussed me, she did this to me, or he did that to me. It doesn't cover that, but it does cover the bullying.
Okay. And I, I have a question. Well, if I can, so, uh, this hap- covers school. What happens if stuff happens in like a locker room? What's the process?
If something happens, it, it kind of depends on what it is. I mean, the coaches are supervising the locker room. If something's reported to the coaches, then, then they would, if it's, if they don't handle it themselves, then they would then turn it into the office, just like a classroom. Teachers handle some discipline themselves and then in a locker room, coaches will handle some themselves.
I, I know that's an area where they really don't want to say anything about each other cause they're already a team and I'm not saying that, like, this is really awful, but I'm not saying anything, you know?
They don't have to go directly to the coach. I mean, they can go to a principal, to their guidance council, they can go, they don't have to go to that.
But I think that some of them are afraid to say something to the coach because, yeah, I mean, uh, let's be real, they're all, you know, they're teammates and like, I would like, but this one particular action is not acceptable. Okay.
They, they need to report it.
All right.
If something's unacceptable, they need to report.
Okay.
Right?
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, so, there's no other people signed up for patrons' concerns, so.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Yeah, as of 7:05.
So, we will also close the hearing for the, uh, additional appropriation of the rainy day at 7:05.
Can I go with 7:02? Cause I've been using all my phone the whole time, okay?
No, whatever.
7:05?
It's 7:02. 7:02 on the computer too.
All right, you then.
All right.
All right. New business, Dr. Camp.
At this time, I'm asking the board to approve the resolution, uh, of, uh, increasing the appropriations in the rainy day fund by $200,000, uh, for capital outlay if necessary. And this is, uh, the additional appropriation resolution that, you know, if you vote to approve that, we will also need this on.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the resolution for additional $200,000 of appropriations to the rainy day fund.
I'll second that.
So, the motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Stock to approve the resolution for the $200,000 additional appropriation to the rainy day fund as presented by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions regarding this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
We've been talking about the multi-sharing agreement between, uh, tri-state community clinics, North Posey and Mount Vernon. Uh, and we've been talking about that for several years, but finally, Mount Vernon is ready to, to move forward. They would like to enter into a sharing agreement with us. This is very similar to the sharing, it's the exact same sharing agreement, uh, that we have with Expressway. Um, and it, what it will allow, it will allow our people to use the Mount Vernon clinic hours and it will allow Mount Vernon to use our clinic hours. Um, and we'll monitor that, make sure that everything is okay. And, uh, the sharing agreement will begin on November the 1st. I'd ask the board to, uh, let us enter into the multi-agree- sharing agreement with, uh, Mount Vernon and tri-state community clinics for the use of our clinic.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the multi-site sharing agreement with tri-state community clinics and Mount Vernon.
Second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Will, and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the multi-sharing agreement at tri-state community clinics as presented by Dr. Camp. Any comments or questions? I, I will say, I think this is a very positive step. We're out in front of the insurance world on that and it's evident by these other organizations wanting to come on board. So, this gives our, our employees, uh, further opportunities to, uh, utilize these, these services. So, kudos to, to you and the, uh, insurance team for, for wellness team, I should say, right?
I will say that Mount Vernon, uh, when they opened their clinic, well, a year and a half ago, uh, they intentionally chose hours, opposite of hours, so that when we got to this point, nobody would have to adjust hours. Now, you know, uh, Expressway, it just so happens, a lot of our hours were separate. So, uh, uh, it worked out and we had, we actually had a couple of different days, so there was no planning involved in that. We just got lucky there, but Mount Vernon did do the forethought and.
Don't say we got lucky. That was great planning.
You can't, can't always take credit.
No. I think it's a great, it's a great example of cooperation amongst other users, so good job there. Any other comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
To take it a step further, uh, the Posey County is, uh, looking at moving toward the same type of scenario for insurance as we, we've gone to, partially self-funded and opening up their own clinic. And, uh, Mount Vernon and, uh, North Posey and the county have been working together to come up with a lease agreement. Instead of creating another will and having another facility to maintain, they, uh, had been talking to us about sharing our spaces. And, uh, so basically, I'm asking the board to enter into a lease agreement with the county, uh, for them to be able to use our facility four hours per week. And what we will do, instead of the 12 hours that we're currently open, we'll be open 16 hours and the county will pay for the additional four hours. Uh, and the tri-state community clinics will separate the billing on the meds. The other thing that, uh, the lease, uh, basically states that they'll pay us $50 a month for the use of the facility one day a week. Uh, and with Mount Vernon, they're doing the same thing, uh, except they're going to use, they have more employees down there. They're asking for eight hours down there and they've already approved it, Mount Vernon has. Uh, and they'll open their clinic five days a week. Our clinic will be open four days a week for four-hour shifts. Uh, once they get their clinic open and they want to stay proprietary for 60 days so they can do all their intakes and all of their HRAs, we will then come back and ask for a sharing agreement with them. And then we'll be sharing, the, the entire county, the school and the counties will be working together on the clinic. I'm asking at this time for us just to enter into, uh, the lease agreement with the county. And in saying that. Also, I need you to approve the acknowledgement of waiver. Uh, Mr. Bender's law firm re- represents both MSD of North Posey and the county. And, uh, this is a conflict of interest statement that we will enter into now.
Basically, this, uh, Todd, Dr. Camp just said, um, the reason that my associate Jake Weiss represents the county commissioners, so I'll just let you know that. And I have reviewed this lease. It was originally prepared by, uh, was modeled after Mount Vernon and at the request of Dr. Camp, we simplified it, eliminated things we didn't think was, um, necessary. It's basically a straightforward lease. Nothing unusual about it.
Okay.
It's, the main thing is, it's four hours a week, is that correct?
Four hours a week.
And so, they're paying $50 a month, basically to cover it totally.
And I, I think what the county is going to end up wanting to do is either pay that in full or no more than two payments a year, but, uh, and they're going to do the same thing.
Just a simple, just a simple by-payment strike.
And like that, and I always like to, uh, make sure people understand that it's how long you're committed. If something isn't working out, you know, how long are you committed? It's a one-year deal. So, you can, if it's not working out for the district, um, you can cancel it. It's one-year commitment.
Sure. Entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with the county and waiver as presented.
Second.
I'll second that.
So, a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve the lease agreement as presented by Dr. Camp and the waiver of the conflict of interest. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Uh, next on the list, we've had this before you before and we tabled it, uh, to get a second quote. Uh, if you recall, we updated our systems and we're having a lot of trouble with Java. Most everybody is trying to get away from Java and, uh, they've created a Niagara IV that, what happens with Java every time you update, you lose screens and you lose faces in your controls for your HVAC. And Java is very unstable, so people are trying to get away from it. The Niagara IV system, uh, was created in, uh, I mean, just, it's, I mean, it's hot off the press. It's just been created. It's not like anything was out there before. And it is to replace, uh, Java and so you can integrate all your controls so that you can see them in-house and remotely. And, uh, we had a quote from Performance Services for, uh, to do that through all our HVAC systems through the schools, $22,635.98. And we got a second quote from Alpham Mechanical and, uh, they had presented a quote for $27,921. Um, we, we're currently, uh, we're currently doing business with both and they're both doing a great job. I, I, no problem, but with the $5,000 difference for the exact same thing, I'm recommending that we move forward with Performance Services to upgrade our control software and, and the Java to Niagara IV, uh, for the 22,000 and change.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we, um, approve Performance Services to update the HVAC controls.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mrs. Will to approve Performance Services to update the controls and the HVAC systems as presented by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions?
What was the price for the Performance Services one? Twenty-two something?
Twenty-two, 22,000. Yeah, the reason it's not in there, do you have it?
I, that it's not on the documentation. Remember that was like a 30-page that I put separately in 365?
They gave us about four different options.
Yeah.
But.
And that didn't change from last time.
No.
No. That was the one we looked at last month.
And the reason it wasn't all in there is I didn't receive this until Friday or Monday. I can't, I just got it.
Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Uh, next on the list is a bus driver reimbursement policy procedure. Uh, in the past, uh, I mean, we've done various things over the past 10 years. We've never had anything in writing on what we would and would not reimburse for. There were times where we were reimbursing for the license branch and the, and the skills test, and then there were times where we've reimbursed for the physical. And now we can get the physicals done at the clinic and, and then, you know, just things have happened and, you know, we're in a major bus driver shortage across the state. With that being said, we sent out pamphlets. We do have people training and we thought we would put something in writing. The only thing that's in this policy that we weren't really covering before is the lodging, if they're willing to travel to get the three-days, uh, class. You have to, to get a yellow card, there's multiple steps that you have to take. One of the major ones is you have to take that three-day class. Well, we offer it. It used to be in January every year, but I think it's in August now. So, if we waited for everybody just to take our class, we could only get people enrolled once a year. So, there's classes all over the state. They're in Lafayette, they're in Indianapolis. Uh, so, we're saying that if a person is willing to travel to one of the alternate sites, that we will pay up to $50 a night for the three nights that they have to be there to take the class. So, that was the one thing that I've added here. Uh, and they will continue to, they get mileage if, uh, if a corporation vehicle is not available, uh, we would pay them our corporation mileage, which is 34 and a half cents, uh, per mile. And then the travel policy also provides, uh, X amount of dollars a day for, $40 a day for meals. So, I mean, that would be part of it as well. So, I, I think this will be a good tool and it will give us consistency across the board instead of telling one person one thing when they're interested in that, but not giving them all the details. And this way, everybody will get all the same details. So, I'm asking the board to approve these procedures for, uh, the future people.
Doing. And, and those funds come out of the bus transportation fund, right?
Yeah. Uh, all, all of our, all of these reimbursement funds would be coming out of transportation. Uh, we currently, uh, do not have a specific thing for reimbursement in transportation, um, but we have a supplies list and this can be paid out of the supplies, out of transportation. And, uh, and quite frankly, I don't have it set in the budget, but we can create another line item in the budget. Once we get it received, we'll be able to do an amendment and I'll be able to move some money around within that fund to, I mean, we don't have that many people that.
Sure.
Cause the only extra thing that we're doing is the, uh, the travel. So, if anybody wants to be a bus driver.
There's a, there's an article for you to, to, to find out why we're, the state's having that shortage. Um, entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the bus driver reimbursement policy.
I'll second that.
So, a motion by Mr. Oakley and seconded by Mr. Stock to approve the bus driver reimbursement policy as presented by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
We presented you with three calendars. These calendars have been provided to, uh, the, uh, the association and these, uh, they've also been provided to the administrators. Uh, now, you have them as well. We'll be taking action on the next year's calendar at the next board meeting. If you do have any input or you want to make any suggestions, Amy's, Amy's taking the suggestions from, uh, the administrators and she can take your suggestions. And Dave is getting the association suggestions together and we'll be meeting and we'll, we'll go over those and see what we can honor, can't honor, or, or what, but we'll take a look at all the suggestions. I think right now, if, if nothing's changed since we've looked at it, I think option two was what everybody was liking the most. But, you know, everybody, everybody has their little nuances that they want done to it, but, uh, so if you just want to look at those and if you have any questions or anything put out, you can get back with us. No action is needed tonight. Next on the list is professional leave request. Um, the professional leave request are, uh, I'm asking the board to approve those as listed. There's quite a few of them on this one.
Entertain a motion to approve? Entertain a motion to approve?
We'll make a motion to approve a professional leave request.
Second?
I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. Stock and seconded by Mrs. Will to approve the professional leave request as presented by Dr. Camp. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Reports? I'm proud to, uh, present the school board with the, uh, Raleigh Children Foundation. Uh, the schools have raised enough money to, uh, be part of the Achieving Corporations. Uh, we are a Ri- Raleigh school. We have, we have been, uh, pretty much every year. All the schools, uh, take pride in, in doing fundraisers and we well exceed what you're supposed to support. It's a dollar per child. Uh, we have fourteen hundred students and we go way above that. So, uh, our, our, our people are giving back to Raleigh Foundation. We have that award. Angie is, uh, taking over the United Way and, and doing an excellent job. We, uh, had our largest amount last year that we have ever donated to United Way through some fundraisers that they created. South Terrace had a great one, uh, that they did and raised, and I can't remember the exact dollar.
They raised over two thousand dollars and our six thousand that week.
Fundraiser with the students and it, and so we have several fundraisers going on throughout the district this year. We're a pace setter and this is recognizing the school corporation and the board for being a pace setter for the United Way fundraising.
Did I see, uh, some pictures of some people maybe out working for?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I'd like to extend a thank you to our administrators for donating their time, um, to go out and install smoke detectors around.
Did it rain on you?
No, it did not.
Oh, man.
I was, actually it rained, but we were, uh, under an awning.
Oh, so, well, uh, we were down at the end of the street and it hit. And we, we got underneath the front porch and we were standing there and I got on the phone and I said, come pick us up. So we huddled out in the bus garage until it quit raining. That was, that was a, you know, a fun deal.
That was good. That was good to see.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing that I would like to, uh, uh, let the board be aware of, we entered into an agreement with Ivy Tech. Uh, and we have for several years, but we've extended the number of dual-credit classes that Ivy Tech, uh, is reciprocating with us with. Uh, so we're very happy about, uh, the increase in that. Uh, so, uh, we are in a partner, a sharing agreement with them on classes that we offer here that they're actually getting credit at Ivy Tech. So we have that with, uh, some of our other classes too, with, uh, USI and Purdue, so. That's all of our reports. Uh, next board meeting will be November the fourteenth in the board office. Uh, executive session will be five thirty. The regular meeting will be at six thirty. And, uh, that is all I have at this time.
Does anybody else have anything to put to go to the calls? No. I wouldn't like to see you get wet though, that's why.
Others were getting wet.
Not you though.
I didn't need to.
Understood.
I had a electric drill in my hand, so.
You had to protect it.
I, I had to.
Oh, we were in good shape. We had Steve and Scott and they did not have to get a ladder to put the screws in. They put up the smoke detectors with no ladder.
Nice. All right.
Using your personnel wisely.
I was the picture tagger.
Yeah.
We had a talker and they were the installer.
Everybody had a job. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion by Mrs. Will, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to adjourn, and so therefore we are adjourned.
Seven twenty-three.
Seven twenty-three.